I'm going.
We're recording?
We're recording.
We're recording.
All right.
Go for it, James.
This is a village council work session. It is March 6, 2025, and next 7:02 PM. In attendance tonight is councilperson Matt Namarra, councilperson Passion, Mayor Suther, councilperson Grant, councilperson Cameron, myself, our village attorney, Mr. Schump, and our village fiscal officer, Mr. Wil- Wilson.
I almost said Wilkinson. The honor. The honor.
I knew that wasn't right.
It's a good moderator's name. I will check on you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. I will never forget that now. Why did you do that to me? You know that's exactly how I'm gonna say his name every single time now.
We'll check on you.
All right. What, uh, where do we want to start tonight?
Let's do this. Can we just go straight down this agenda and then move into something else? Only because we can, I think we can fly through a couple of these and then we'll hit your guys' committees as we go through and then we'll get to the legislation. And maybe I'm just saying that because FYI, I've had a couple of people request to be on Planning and Zoning. I do have two members. Um, I'm gonna appoint one to a voting member and one to a non-voting. Um, I've done a little bit of, all of my stuff on that. So, um, I think I'm pretty comfortable at which, I put two members in case I switch back and forth. I've been going back and forth, which is gonna be the voting, which is gonna be the non-voting. And FYI, yeah, FYI, we, um, we did talk to Jesse a little bit because at one point we thought about potentially putting JP as a voting member and I also agreed with Jesse that I did not think that was in the best interest because he's already on council. But he is the only one that actually, that we have that was, would have been on a voting member that understands the process, had been through all of the meetings. All of these people are brand new. Um, but I completely agreed with Jesse's, it's just not in the best interest of the village. Even if we can, even if we, it doesn't matter if we can. I don't think we should. He does not believe we should. Because he's, it's just too many people. Yeah, it's just not a good look. Um, and I, I think it's fair that we have some new people. Um, Rainey did not want to move forward. Um, she just wanted to take some time. And, um, Louis is still gonna stay as a non-voting and JP is still gonna stay as a non-voting. Um, the two people that I have are Kaylee and I also have Brandon. Um, so I'm going to appoint one of them. I'm gonna appoint both of them. There have been some other ones, but I did narrow it down to those two. I'm pretty comfortable with that. And, um, so that will be next week. And then that's all I have for that. And then, does anybody have anything on the meeting minutes? Did anybody see them? Though, I'm just going down the agenda.
No, I don't look at them.
Okay. Um, so just look at them before the meeting. If anybody has anything, you guys can either email Barb or we can discuss it next week. Chief just sent his report to me. I don't know if you guys all got it or if I just got it. Um, I think we just got it, to be completely honest.
Yes.
So she will add that to the packet. Um, if anybody is interested, I can get it printed and get this to you in five minutes. Actually, let's just try to grab one.
Anything crazy on what you go about?
No. It's just the normal. Um, the one thing that I'm gonna point out is I, I've had, I had someone, again, just kinda say the same thing, that they're just, they don't think that officers are pulling people over and giving them tickets and doing all of that. And all I do is encourage people to look at this report year over year. Um, the other thing that I'm gonna point out is just because you don't see certain things doesn't mean that it doesn't exist. We do have quite a few streets. We do have quite a bit of area now. Um, and the last part to this is, and I actually asked Chief if it was okay if I did remind people of this, but, um, we do have a new system and it's an e-ticket system and it is very quick and it's very efficient. Officers used to sit behind someone 15, 20 minutes, 30 minutes, depending on the situation, when they pull someone over. Now you swipe their driver's license, you can issue them a ticket in a matter of moments. So it is a different process. The numbers speak for themselves. So please just review the numbers that are on there. Um, and if you have questions, always. Leah has any information that you want, please feel free. She has even asked that if you have questions as far as Mayor's Court goes, please do that. It is not Franklin County. The only thing that goes to Franklin County is what we send to them for one reason or another. Um, but it is through Mayor's Court. Jesse is always here every other Wednesday-ish. Um, and that's how Mayor's Court is handled. But we do have quite a bit of a docket recently. And that's, that's as far as I'm gonna go with that. But please read the numbers on there. And I do think maybe it is because the e-tickets are a little quicker now, that maybe people aren't seeing it as much. But just because you're not seeing something doesn't mean that they're not.
I have definitely seen a few, a little more lately. I've also seen them out on 161 again, which for a while I didn't see them out on 161 at all, so.
Yeah.
But I'll say that I'll see them in spurs. Like, there'll be a couple of days where I'm like, oh, they're gonna be over here at the construction and then I won't see them again for a week or two.
And a lot of times, again, they do go back and forth between Cleveland Avenue. They go 161. They do, and again, if you sit in the same place every single day, then you're gonna see the same people every single day. So they do try to make their rounds, you know, whether they're over by the school. They tend to try to do that area. Sometimes they'll do, um, you know, we might get a complaint on Alder Vista and they will go spend some time on Alder Vista. Or, um, and again, the thing that, to remind people is they could also be working on something totally different. And, you know, they don't have the ability to just sit and write tickets. They might be doing something from the night before or, um, they might have gotten a phone call for something, you know, more, I don't wanna use the word domestic, but just something that's not speeding type, that's type thing, that our officers don't just do speeding tickets, that we do have a small department. Um, and there are times in which, yes, they are investigating something or working on something that may bring them off of the street for a few hours. So, again, just pointing that out because somebody just brought that to my attention again 48 hours ago and I'm like, um, not, if you look at the numbers, it's definitely not accurate. So, but that's that.
Um, any updates on filling the two positions?
Um, so we have one per, we, we actually, the two that we interviewed, one did decline and one is still moving forward. I do anticipate that person moving forward. Um, this week, next week, next week, we have three interviews. Um, I wanted to make sure, yeah, okay.
Oh, but I have to miss one.
That's fine, yeah. So we have three interviews, um, three different people. So once we do those interviews, hopefully we will move forward with that. Um, I, there might be some little moving around between SROs and this and that. I'm not getting into that because I don't know. Um, but there's, you know, there, there are some applicants. We will be interviewing some and hopefully, um, right now we do have three vacancies. One, like I said, is being taken. So we do have two openings right now and we have three interviews. But I do, we have three interviews.
Okay.
How much does it cost to interview people?
How much do you charge? I'm just teasing. Um, so, and it's typically a panel. So a lot of times, if you guys don't know this, um, we like to bring in a councilperson, myself, Leah, and if Jeff is available, Jeff will come in. If Leah's not available, Jeff will come in or vice versa, or we will all do it. Um, this particular time, we are going to have Kathy do it, but next time we will probably have Jason do it or you do it. Um, we do have an officer leaving. I was hoping that we were gonna do an exit interview. I'm not exactly sure where that is and what's going on with that because tomorrow's the last day. Tomorrow's last, is last day.
You talking about Officer Palmer?
Yes.
We did that today.
You did do it? I just didn't know. Okay, nobody. I have been going 90 miles an hour, so I did not know that. So thank you. Um, so there's that. And then, so yes, we are moving forward, hoping to get some new people in here. And to answer that question, not that specific, it doesn't cost us anything to interview. It starts costing once we get into like,
Background.
Of all of that stuff and uniforms and, and all of that. So, and that Chief would be able to tell you like what it cost us to bring in a new officer.
I really don't care about it.
Perfect.
Kind of.
Um, unless Kathy's charging us, I don't know.
Cookies.
Cookies. That's what it costs us.
The console.
I heard those new Post Malone Oreo cookies are really good.
No, no, no. So as far as the police goes, that's that. Jeff, do you wanna do yours and then you can get out of here?
Sure. So, um, Tom, you had mentioned something about talking about the annual financial report?
Yes.
Anyways, first thing I want, are there questions concerning the report before I highlight some things?
Start with, you start and then we'll.
So, the report that I sent to everybody, there's two copies up there that I printed. It's basically a cash basis money statement. It's essentially what we receive in revenue, what we pay out. That's the gist of it, okay? Uh, that is the basis of accounting that is allowed by the state. Larger revenues such as school districts, cities, counties have to report in accordance with only except the county premises. In other words, on a pool basis, we don't have to. But that is a great, involved a great deal more, so. Um, I have some things I'm gonna highlight. I'm not gonna go through this in detail. But, um, first thing I wanna point out is income tax revenue for '24 was $2.3 million. That represents 68% of the operating revenue for General Fund. So it is by far the largest. Over the last three years, income tax has increased. 2022 was a 7.45% increase. In '23 was a 12.2% increase. And this is over the prior year. And last year, we had 11.14% increase over '23. So in that regards, we're doing good. The income tax revenue is growing. Our largest taxpayer is Westville City Schools. So, um, we still have a collection, I'm sorry. We still have a filing complaints issue. And I've reached back out to Rita again. We're trying to work some things out. Um, trying to arrange a conference call or so or meeting with the rep that's here in Columbus between Jesse, myself and Leah so we can figure out the next step in pursuing the non-fileer. So that's, information will be forthcoming at a later date.
And don't remind me, please. Don't, you know, you say something about that they start to fall off after
Yes.
so many years. So are we still able to go after them or the later ones?
The subpoena program looks at the last five years. So you could ignore it for five years and then you drop off.
Right.
The subpoena, you're still, you're not in the village, okay? So again, a lot of them have ignored it. To the 300-some houses. So we'll see what we get as far as information. But what we are trying to do is, uh, lay out the process for bringing them into court.
Okay. It'll probably be some legislation to add a code provision that makes it a mis, a unclassified misdemeanor to not file. We'll summons them in, scare them, say file or else. And then that'll sort, that's what we do in a couple cities, but I just wanted to talk to three of them first.
So that's interesting that it's five years instead of the typical seven you think of when it comes to other things like credit reporting and like debt collection. I mean, I don't, I, I have no love for taxes in general. I don't think anyone does. But it's interesting that it's a shorter time range.
Okay. The next item of revenue is property taxes. And that is our next largest source of revenue. Interesting thing with property taxes, and I can't tell you that. I don't wanna say this. If you look at the back the last three or four years, the fluctuation is huge. And the only thing I can tell you is if you go back and adjust for the delinquencies that come back into play, it begins to smooth out. Overall, the property tax remains fairly consistent from year to year except in the year after a reappraisal. Okay? So the last reappraisal, to the best of my knowledge, was for property valuations of '23 and the taxes collected in '24. And we increased $25,000 because of the reappraisal roughly, okay? But if you were to look at just the revenue for each year, there's a wild swing. At the end of '22, there was delinquencies of $32,000 in property taxes for General Fund. At the end of '23, there was $12,000. Well, I'm sorry, that's what was collected included with the revenue, right? So the fluctuations are caused partially by the delinquency. And a lot of it goes back to coming out of COVID.
It looks like we're getting from last year from 2023's report.
Correct. Because in '23, we had $458,000 in revenue.
Right.
This year, for '24, we had $454,000.
Right.
In '23, there's $32,000 worth of delinquencies that were collected. That's what I was trying to point out.
Yeah, I actually know one of the really large ones, I believe, was, um...
So that, what I just rattled off of the delinquencies does not touch TIF.
Gotcha.
We got problems over there with the delinquencies too. Okay? Um, which brings me to the next, I don't know. Payment of taxes that's on here. And that, you'll see $619,000 over in the special revenue column. That represents the pilot payments from the MI development. Problem there is the estimated revenue that the county puts on the amendment certificate for us is $745,000. We have to get to the debt. We're not, we're on rate, okay? Last year, for '24, we had $700,000 in revenue to the TIF. In '23, we had $736,000. And '22 was the first time that we actually had, I don't wanna say. It was the first time we had collections after we issued the debt. So we had a half a year there and that was $355,000. But that's also what brought about that advance that was done from General Fund to the, uh, TIF fund in order to pay the debt. So we're still paying that advance off. Unfortunately, it hasn't been as fast as I initially planned because I was looking at $745,000 in revenue. Okay? So, um, the general fund balance.
Now, how does that work? And this is just a question. How far, they still only let them get three years behind on their property taxes. Is that accurate?
Yeah, it's positive.
Who is that?
Franklin County. I was under the impression that after three years, it goes to tax lien.
I don't know that much.
Okay. I was just curious how long they can actually go before?
Before they, uh, before?
I don't know exactly what, I just know something, something I thought after three years of not paying your property taxes, you go into some sort, and maybe they don't do that anymore, but they used to for sure. It used to be published in the newspaper. The Columbus paper, there used to be pages and pages of people that, I don't know if it's three years or five years. Do you know, Eric?
No, yeah. I didn't read it all.
Oh, you pay yours? That's crazy, right?
It goes out. Yeah, I don't know why we don't pay. It's just also when they publish, I think we don't have to.
It used to.
Yeah, I think they.
Maybe they don't anymore.
Requirement publication. Um, and I think the requirement's have changed.
They, yeah, it's very possible.
Yeah. Looking at the expenditure side of things for General Fund, our budget versus actual expenditures, we only spend 84% of the budget. Which is good. Usually, if you're spending 90% of your budget, so that's pretty good. Okay? So we only spend 84%. Uh, our largest expenditure is the police and fire protection. Uh, fire contracts in the vicinity of about $270,000. The rest of that is police operations.
And the decrease from '23 to '24 on that, is that still that two years lumped together from the, uh, that we didn't pay in '22?
Oh, on the fire contract.
Yeah.
Yes, they're not timely billings.
Perfect.
So I still have a $200-some-thousand dollar encumbrance for last year's service that they haven't done before.
Awesome.
Put it this way, $70,000 I haven't invested.
Yeah, it's interesting.
So, um, I, I'll wait a little longer than I guess someone email. And ask for it.
I understand.
Anyways, um, suppose, the next largest expenditure in General Fund is general government. And I've mentioned this before. There are some things in general government that need to be tore apart and moved to proper program. In other words, whether it's leisure time activity or community environment or so on, okay? And part of it is just, the maintenance department is considered part of general government or has been. But their activities are constantly expanded. So now we've got, things in there have been involved a lot with the community environment and maintenance parks. So that, I need to pull them out and get them out of general government. So I'm working with that and looking at how to move out, okay?
Will that be another?
No, it'll actually just move some of the money up to leisure time activities or community environment in there, okay?
So maintenance doesn't have its own, even though it's a department?
I'm sorry.
Maintenance doesn't have its own budget line item, even though it's a department?
They're under maintenance and buildings in general government. General Fund, general government.
Okay, okay.
So in the answer to your question, yes.
But, yeah.
But it's not called maintenance department. It's maintenance buildings.
Okay.
Okay? So I need to fix that one and clean that up a little bit. It's just the nature of the beast, it's grown up.
Yeah.
So we'll get it cleaned up. More likely to see some of those changes come about for the '26 budget. Okay? If I find some large expenditures this year, we'll get it moved ahead of time. But that may require real appropriations.
You, are you anticipating anything?
I'll come back to that.
Okay.
Okay? The other thing that, that most people will focus on is what is the balance in General Fund? We ended the year with $2.3 million in General Fund. Which is great, okay? We initially planned to end General Fund based on our budget to have about $1,562,000. And again, we hit $2.3 million. What contributed to that is our estimated revenues came in higher by $105,000. And our budgeted expenditures were $618,000 under what we budgeted. So that all contributed to that increase of $700-some-thousand in fund balance. Which is great because that gives us the opportunity to set aside some additional funds for street improvements, storm sewer, and maybe a little more with the pool, okay? So.
So does, I know that, I know that as we talk about the budget, you like to show us, um, that we want so much money kind of in a reserve. Does that, so are you saying that we're ahead in that?
We're ahead of that.
Okay.
Roughly a hundred pounds.
And if you're looking, if you're taking those numbers and forecasting them out five years, does that make us look better even further out? Or are you anticipating something down the road?
I'm going to recommend setting some of that money aside. But I'm still trying to maintain roughly about a million and a half carryover balance. That's roughly where we want to stay. And that's equivalent to about, uh, three months' worth of baggage expenditures, okay? So, again, I'm also looking at all the projects that we've got to deal with and trying to make sure we've got dollars set aside to help cover that. It's great when we can get grant money or, um, inexpensive loans, such as with Ohio Public Works Commission. Because that helps out a great deal. Trying to deal with some of these road projects.
Right. It's like having a real kind relative, you know?
That's right.
You're like, here, put this on the.
Overall, General Funds ended well for us, okay? As we start into the tax budget, which is the June-July timeframe, I'll be looking at General Fund again and looking out again five years, okay? I use five years as a basis to make sure we can afford to do certain things. And to make sure that if we've got budget issues out there somewhere, that we're aware of it and we try to address it.
Right.
Okay? The column labeled debt service, that covers the two loans that we have with Ohio Public Works Commission. And that is, uh, sewer lines that were recently done. There's Phase Two and Phase Three that came into play. I believe that's what they were, one and two. It's in here. Those two loans, I have next year's, I don't wanna say this. I hold back or maintain a fund balance equal to the next year's debt service payments. And I will continue to do that. I cannot do that with the development bonds for the, uh, MI because there's a specific source of revenue that comes in for that. Yes, we can build up a balance if we ever collect as much as we're supposed to. But there's some little projects that some of that money can be used for as we accumulate it, okay? But I also have a pretty secure set, uh, source of revenue for that debt. And there are a couple of street loans, old street loans with PWC that.
Coming off.
This year and next year, they will be paid off. And they're paid out or that is being paid with the money in the street maintenance fund.
And are those the 0% interest ones or does?
I believe two of them are. One of them is a low interest.
I knew we had one that had interest.
So, that part, um, which I'll point out at the end here. Just flipping down through the report and looking at the notes to it, those are the financial statements. Uh, paying attention to a few of them. Note four, which is on page seven. Starts on page seven. This outlines the deposits and investments of which we have, the village has. And page seven identifies what our balances are invested in in terms of the treasury, bills, notes, bonds, government agencies, and a couple of mutual funds, okay?
Okay.
I usually try to maintain about $400,000 in the checking account. The rest of it is all invested in. We may not hit as much interest earnings this year as we did last year because rates have come down somewhere.
That's right.
With the debt, the bond proceeds that came in for this building and the lakes, et cetera, I'm required when I invest it to keep it segregated. So at the top of page eight, that's what's in segregated accounts at this point.
That 1.8?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay?
So the 1.8 is, describe that again, if you don't mind.
The 1.8 represents the remaining bond proceeds that are invested and I'm required to keep those segregated.
The TIF.
Which we're supposed to have spent by?
I'm sorry.
Are we supposed to have that money spent by May? Or have we kind of worked out?
Yes. There's one part of the legislation that says we've spent it all in 36 months. There's another part that says, in the exact sentence right before, says we'll spend 85% of it. So it's a little confusing as to which ones really don't apply. Either way, bond cons will be notified coming that here's where we're at. New government?
What, what do you anticipate spreading out of that between now and then? Do we, do we have some costs that we know of that are coming up?
We are incurring costs every month. We have engineering costs for the lakes. We have engineering costs and now soon construction costs coming for maintenance building. So you'll probably see that.
Oh, sure.
Couple of thousand dollars more coming off of, okay?[1650.22] I'll probably have a million four, million five by the end of May left. So we'll see. And there's, like I said, it's still invested. Conversation with bond consul as to what happens. My understanding is a portion of the interest earnings have to be refunded to the IRS's arbitrage.
That's all it is. It was tough to take it all back.
Jeff, what's the standard for government as to how much money to have in the bank in either savings and investments? I know what it is for nonprofit, but I don't know what it is for government.
There really isn't a standard.
Really?
Good budgeting will set target balances that you want to try and carry. So GFOA, Government Finance Officers Association, the National GFOA, encourages you to have six months' worth of revenue as your carryover balance in general fund. Might be a little high. Some places can't do that. And the other thing that can come back in place, if you look at your sources of revenue, depending upon what those are, will depend upon whether you reduce that balance. Right now, we're just pushing for three months' average expenditures, which is, if I'm sorry, one point five million, I think that's around eight hundred thousand. Okay? Sorry, I misspoke earlier. So general fund is one of the ones that you look at. Your special revenue funds, you have restricted revenues that come in for specific purposes. And you have to utilize the facility now. Special levies, which we don't have special levy, when we have special levies, there's general fund. If we had a levy for fire operations or for fire protection, that levy's going to generate enough revenue to cover each year. You're not going to be carrying over a large balance. You can have a policy that addresses your carryover balances for debt services. Kind of have that with what I set aside in debt service. So it's more policy driven and it's at the local level. Note five talks about property taxes. And not everybody picks up on this. There's always two years involved with property taxes. You have the tax year and the collection year. Tax year is the first year, in this case for twenty-four, twenty-three's the tax year. Valuations in twenty-three are what drives the revenues collected in twenty-four. Same thing goes when you go to sell your house, why you have to pay catch-up or pay catch-up with the property taxes. It's because there's two years involved. The levies are presented on page nine. Both the full rate and the effective rates that come into play. And then the property valuation is there. I mentioned that twenty-three tax years, when the reappraisal was completed, our property valuation increased twenty-five million dollars or so less.
Forty-nine to sixty-three.
Okay, hang on. Do you, since we're going through this, I didn't know, do you, is there anything that you need?
I, no, I'm sorry.
Hang on one second.
So, yeah, one second, so no, if we, you know, there's going to be a nice little thing with council and I think, do you have anything, Jesse, because I don't have anything major.
I was trying not to keep them here if it's, if he, because they really didn't have anything for tonight. And that's what I was just saying, if you guys don't have anything. Jason, do you have anything for Jesse?
I will call you or, you call me when you're free.
Because we're going to have quite a bit at the end.
Because we were in a while, we still get the signatures, so I didn't want to talk about that.
I just know we have quite a bit of like tree stuff and all that kind of stuff. I just didn't want to keep these guys here if we don't have to. But if he has one that, yeah.
Actually, the increase in valuation is thirteen and a half million from tax year twenty-two to tax year twenty-three.
And that total valuation, what is that, is that a percentage of the total valuation of the real estate in the village or?
That is the total. There's the fair value and the assessed value.
Do you know the difference between the two?
Fair value is essentially what you could sell the house for. Now, what shows up on the county attorney's website is usually less than true. What it could be, okay? The assessed value is thirty-five percent of true value or the fair value. And that's what the taxes are based on. So the last item in the report that I wanted to bring attention to is the debt. And that's on page twelve. So what was retired from the year and the balances that were at the top of the page, the future debt service payments are at the bottom of the page. And you can see the PWC loans for this three street projects were paid off in twenty-six, by the end of twenty-six. Just in time for us to take on potentially new loan for River Lake Road.
I got an email from Ben that I'm going to forward you. Just because they're getting ready to come to, if we need something, we need to start moving on it.
My understanding on the project for River Lake Road and for PWC, we're looking at, we're just shy of a million dollar grant and a hundred thousand dollar loan. That is fantastic. Because all the dollars that I was looking at, we would have to cough up now to be utilized for another phase of River Lake Road. If there are other questions at the end of the report, I'll certainly try to answer them.
What, sorry, on page twelve of OWPC loans, are the ones at the bottom that have a range, are those future loans? Or what, I don't understand.
That table represents the future debt service that we have to pay each year.
So what's the years then, when you have twenty thirty to twenty thirty-four?
I think that's every year the sewer system's going to cost seventy-two thousand.
Oh, we're just saying that those are the same payment or that's what we have to pay each year?
The requirement with the table is you present the first five years, settle, and then you do it blocks five.
Okay, that makes sense, sorry.
Anything else? Okay, so there's one other thing, you know, I'm probably going to jump ahead of what's on your agenda that I wanted to bring up. There's ordinance being presented that I sent to everybody that addresses compensation with the police department. We have some very creative people that have created a massive nightmare regarding shift differential. So what I'm attempting to do here is this eliminates any reference to shift differential, the ordinance that is presented to you. And what I've done is I've established a range for second and third shift people and a range for first shift, for patrol officers. Because of all the creativeness and greediness downstairs, the implementation of a simple dollar extra for second and third shift people has become a nightmare.
Can you provide an example of this?
Yeah, this is the first article of this.
I mean, are people like staying later so that they're going to get that extra dollar?
People flip-flopping between first shift and second shift or second or first and third. Anytime they work it, they want that extra dollar. That's not the intent that was happening here. If you fill in on the second shift, you're not going to get it. It's supposed to be based upon where you are normally assigned to work. So they're coming up with all sorts of creative things. I started working up at one point how it was going to work. And I was looking back at four FOP contracts on this. Trying to figure out just exactly how it was all going to work, okay? I, sometimes I can't come up with something, watch what they've applied downstairs and trying to get this. So the simple thing is to, I've eliminated the reference to shift differential by creating a separate range.
So it's been removed from the salary and pay ranges?
Is it possible that in doing so, people's pay will be limited or otherwise reduced?
No. We're doing, no, it will not be reduced. It's actually, everybody is, in January, everybody's assigned to shift.
That's good, it's just my fear that, as we're already, you know, at a disadvantaged staff wise, that this might not be the best time to do something like that. But if it's, if it's not going to hurt anyone's pay, then it's.
Problem is, what's in the old ordinance is vague.
It was one sentence. It was one sentence.
Yes.
And this is so much more clear.
Yes.
Yes.
Like I said, I had two thirds of a sheet of paper on how it's going to apply. And it just got ridiculous, okay? Not to mention our ability to program it and get it paid. So this straightens it out, I hope. But I do need to add one sentence in here that points out that the sergeant and lieutenant's pay is based upon the first shift in step six, when you apply the six percent in the, for the sergeant, six percent for the lieutenant. It is not intended to be based upon second shift and third shift just because they jump back and forth as to what shift they're working. Okay? So we're still, so the sergeant gets six percent of step six for the shift one. The lieutenant gets six percent above the sergeant. But it all is based upon shift one. And I'm going to tell you this, it's very far, being a little bossy here, whatever. If they come up with any more ways to try and work this, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the whole damn thing to be repealed.
And I'm paying full grades.
Okay?
That's how bad it's been.
All I can say is they've gotten excessively greedy downstairs and you can't think of all the ways they've come up with, how can I get the extra dollar?
The unfortunate part is, the reason that it was meant for will be, unfortunately, will be the people that will be hurt by it. And again, the intent from the village was very gracious. And I think Jeff and I at some point and Leah become a little defeated. And I'm thinking you guys probably do too. Again, I, I know that we've given over thirty-five percent pay increases to every single person that is potentially causing a problem. And at some point, it does become a smack in the face. And I think we're all starting to feel that way. That, and I will just say, I had to hear about this shift diff for what, three weeks? It happened before I left and it was still going on when I left.
Sorry, guys. I, I don't know if I see it all the same, but I mean, what I, what I do in a sense kind of understand is making it competitive with other departments across, that surround us, whatever, in the area. But what, because how I interpreted was if, if I worked for a shift and I worked four hours over because I would get that extra dollar.
No, you wouldn't, you would get overtime.
You'd get overtime for it.
Which is maybe more than shift diff.
Shift one, you worked four hours over, you get time and a half.
Or if I covered for somebody on third shift one day, I should get that third shift pay.
You're, because you're inconvenienced for one day versus somebody that's inconvenienced for their life.
Somebody on third shift having to work over into first shift will still get their standard break at time and a half.
I would think they would get that first shift pay, that's the easier time to work, right? I mean, I don't know what the risk reward ratio thing is.
Becomes a nightmare, we're a nightmare programming this for compensation purposes.
Sure, yeah.
I am trying not to air or dirty laundry.
No, it's okay, I, I just think, because it's so vague, it's just up to interpretation.
What I want to do is, if you look at, and I don't know if you have the ordinance for me, if you look at the ranges that are set for second and third shift, you will see that step one is exactly one dollar above shift, late on shift, shift number one. Second and third is about a bit more. At that point, the steps are six percent across. So it applied to six percent straight across, okay? I did not, I looked at it, just bumping every, every step a dollar. That's still showing that we've got something going on here. That I don't want any association with a shift differential. So second and third people have a separate dollar amount because they're inconvenienced, they're working with something different than what you and I work, okay? There's no reference at all in this to a shift differential. It's flat out, second and third shift, you see the different dollar amount.
And does it say, like, have we put in here that? I, I know you, you're saying that that's the shift that they're bid on or assigned to. I guess I'm just wondering if, if it's better to say something like, you must work a minimum of this many hours in that shift.
No, it's, it's your permanently assigned shift. It has nothing to do, if you work second, if you're.
Yeah, but let's say you're permanently assigned second, but now you have to work first.
But that's not what it says, it's, you are. Yes, read that paragraph. And if you, tell me if you think it's clear.
Are shifts assigned based on a specific set of criteria?
So in January, they are given, December, they are given a sheet, there's a sheet that's posted downstairs. And it basically has a lieutenant, sergeants, they're put where they are supposed to be based on maybe what the chief has, got as a requirement. So there might be a sergeant on second, a sergeant on third, there might be a lieutenant wherever he decides that that person is needed for this year. The K-9 officer, the SRO will also be, this is your times for the SRO because obviously there's set times for that. And the K-9 will be marked, this is the K-9. Like, the K-9 officer can't just work for a shift because he wants to. He's put where a K-9 would typically be, okay? The rest of the guys then fill in based on, there might be two second shifts available, a first shift available and two thirds. So you have five officers that, based on seniority, they pick first, second, third, fourth, and fifth. And I'm using, I don't know how many there are.
Shift for the year.
So that is your shift for the year. There are times in which if you're short staffed, somebody might be moved for two or three weeks, but that is not your assigned shift. Your assigned shift, so this addresses your assigned shift assignment.
And that's seniority, a seniority within the Nervacore.
Correct.
So in theory, somebody could pick the evening shift to get the higher pay.
Absolutely, and it's based on, absolutely. Our twenty-five-year officer, that's been an officer, he's not been here that long, but we have an officer that's been here for an extremely long time. He's our longest officer that's been here, but he's also the longest officer that's been an officer. I'm just going to say, he's on first shift because typically, officers that have, and I, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but in a lot of departments, you see officers tend to go to that first shift that's been doing this for a long time. You tend to see some of the other officers go to second and third based on if they have kids, you know, if they're going to football practice or this or that, they'll pick different shifts based on their life.
It's the same thing, I mean, both shift work, like nursing is the same way. The labor has mostly go to nights, the
Absolutely.
The old guard tends to go days, but there's always exceptions either way. One thing I'll say is I, without knowing everyone's career all that well, I would say that I'm probably one of the only shift workers in here. And I would say that if we're going to be, you know, from another perspective, messing with or adjusting pays for, you know, people who work non-traditional hours, I would say that that's something to tread carefully on. I'm not saying don't, I'm just saying to be cognizant. That's all I'll say about it. I'm not saying what we're doing is incorrect in any sense, I'm just saying that be aware.
What I'm hoping is what's proposed here simplifies the problem.
I certainly hope so.
I'll be honest, my way of simplifying it is just to get rid of it completely.
That's, that's the next.
That's how I'm wording you about.
Honestly, where I'm leaning at this point.
But the unfor, but the unfortunate part is, and I, and now I am going to say this on record, I do not believe that there has been an issue, the people that have received it, that have been working second and third shift are extremely grateful. And I think that that's a smack in their face because it has become an accounting nightmare and it's become everything else. In what I would, I would view that one sentence as something that honestly, I was surprised that it ever came to what it came to. We are talking about eight dollars per shift. We are literally talking about eight dollars. I am shocked that this became a thing. And I'm saying this on public record and I'm going to leave it at that.
By setting a separate range for second and third shift should solve the problem. And hopefully, it works smoothly going forward. Because if it's not going to work and they come up with more creative ways to try and milk this dollar, I will come back to you to repeal it.
And, and I am also in agreeance.
I'm trying my best to recognize second and third shift and give them some additional compensation for what they work.
And this is not abnormal with like Westerville and all of these other places. But the amount of hours that we have spent on it, and it's not amount of hours that's trying to screw people out of it, it's the amount of hours just trying to, the purpose that we put shift diff in for was for the people that worked second shift and third shift on a daily, not the one day inconvenience here, the one day inconvenience there. But it's the fact that somebody that works two to ten every single day misses out on life. I mean, I, and you are fully aware of it.
Yes.
People that work nights don't even know what it's like to be out in the daytime. So it is, it's a lifestyle difference, not an inconvenience of a day. That was the purpose behind it, and if that's not going to work, then we are, we upstairs are in agreeance that we will just remove it because it is, it has just become a thing. And I think that's probably all we want to say about it.
Yeah, I, I have trouble with, because every time I see something taken advantage of because there's an ambiguous definition to it, I think shame on us. Shame on us for not.
I never expected to.
I know, and I get it, but I, I work in insurance, so when I see people say, I'm like, oh, you got me. One time, you know, we crafted this thing for hundreds of years and you got me this one time.
Yeah.
I, I think shame on us.
Yeah.
And I don't want to, because, listen, if, if they did that for me on council, I'm like, hey, get an extra thousand, I'd be like, pow. You need me to unplug the toaster? I mean, like, what do you need me to do?
I will insert the extra sentence that clarifies the compensation for sergeant lieutenant for Thursday next week. And probably the last meeting of March, I will bring in a supplemental appropriation request to you. I have a compliance issue with the construction fund because everything is worked out with estimates that I have to fix. So that's going to be a collection of appropriations there. And there's a couple of tweaks we may have to make, so I'm looking at that to get those figured out on the most team.
Okay? Quick question on the financials, I wanted to let you keep talking. On the receipts and disbursements, I think that we would like to create some type of a graphic, I know we've talked about this. Is there a way for us to get maybe three to five or six categories of receipts and disbursements so we could put it on a very simple, a ten-year-old could read it and So we could put it on a very simple, a ten-year-old could read it and go.
So.
This is how much we're getting in.
Maybe source of the revenue has outlined on the receipts.
Okay.
There's your, there's your categories.
Okay.
Some of them that are small, we just combine it as another.
Okay.
And the same goes with the expenditure programs. Security versus property, the public housing, that's what we would do a graph with.
Okay.
We can drill, drill down into each one of those and explain a little more as to what's in it. Such as security versus property, this police and fire contract and street lighting.
Okay.
Okay, so we could work it that way.
Okay. Past street lighting?
Yes, there's conferences.
We have some.
And there's certain lights throughout the village that we have.
Oh, okay.
Okay, anything else?
When they haven't been dug up by the contractors. No, sorry, I'm, I'm gonna go on a rant, but, cause I'm still upset about that, but.
More beer than like a fire hydrants.
And just a little side note for everybody echoing here.
Oh, yeah.
I met with one contractor to work on sound panels to try and fix this.
It's rough.
It's terrible.
It's really bad.
We should have, I'll have a proposal come through next week. I'm trying to get a second and a third one. Ten, ten grand was budgeted. I don't know what these people are gonna come in at, but.
If they look, if they look like streets, could we put them in the street budget?
Maybe if they paved.
I'm sure they don't mean made for anything.
I don't. Does anybody before they?
You don't wanna be here because we can ask questions for years.
Always feel free to call me.
Oh, we do.
You probably write that down and then you charge us for that, so.
Oh, he will.
Yeah, but it's on a retainer.
Yeah, we're good.
It all works until there's an adjustment one year and then Jeff is upset because he will check the budget.
That's true.
Are you, Jeff, you're not in tomorrow?
Correct.
Yes. Back Monday. Awesome.
And Leah won't, okay. Got it. We're good. Fine, you drop all your.
Has the budget been posted? I'm sorry. Has the budget been posted or will it be posted after we vote on it? Is that how, how?
Budget, not the budget.
Is that the annual report? I'm sorry.
It's already posted.
Oh, it's posted. Okay, thank you.
There's no voting on it.
There's no, yeah, we don't.
It's more this.
I knew we got it.
If the budget is, it is alright.
So that is all your fiscal stuff in a nutshell. I did meet with, I'm just gonna keep going down this list. I did meet with Mike Flickinger last Friday. Um, we talked about the maintenance garage and we did meet with a contractor. There is no set date that they are gonna start yet. Um, we have applied for all of the permits. Mike actually got that finished up Sunday. I signed all the paperwork Monday. Those have all been submitted. So until we get all of that back, we do not have a set start date. They will notify us. We will post everywhere that we normally do. But it's coming. I mean, I would say it is pretty quick. We did do the expediting on the permits. So again, I do anticipate those to come through pretty quickly and then they will begin, so. We don't anticipate roads being shut down with moving materials in and out or anything like that. Um, they're aware of their working hours. They're aware of all of the things that we typically talk about. Mike always brings an agenda. We go through everything. Um, so not anticipating anything, but I don't have a set date for you guys. I'm still hopeful that it will be this month, that they will begin. Um, there's no set time on how long it's gonna take again. It's gonna depend on how March goes, how April goes. And if there's any delays with materials or anything like that. Um, there are a couple of things that we do plan on changing a little bit. I won't go too far in detail on that, but you guys can ask questions later, but um, one of the things is there was a lot of electric stuff in there versus gas and we are trying to make sure that it's gas heat instead of electric heat. There's some little things like that that we're tweaking just because upfront, it might be cheaper to do the electric, but by far, we think it's gonna be cheaper to do gas. So there's, there's some little toying that we're doing with a couple of little things, but again, I don't know that we need you guys for any of that. I'm just advising, so.
I mean, you, you guys might have already talked about this, but I would encourage us to upgrade the electrical as much as possible.
That was the other thing that we had talked about quite a bit. Um, I am, Jeff and I did, we, we did have that conversation as well, making sure that in there, we have the ability for, um, in the panel for, you know, generators or, you know, things like that.
Compressors.
Compressors.
That will take a lot of energy.
So if we do have to come back to you guys for any minor tweaks, obviously we will because that we have to. Um, and we will, so, but no fine date of the start date, but we are moving forward. We did meet with them. They're aware of all of our rules and regulations, so, um, anything that they need, they need to contact and we're excited to get it rolling.
Anything else on the lakes?
Not, yes, I mean, just a little bit.
I really wanna start spending money on doing more than what we did.
So do I.
End of July is where I'm not, I'm not expecting you guys to have any updates from anything until the end of July. That's my understanding and that is as far as the permitting process goes. So, um, I do expect it somewhere around the end of July, we'll have some updates from that. Um, the thing that we do have is two estimates for um, tree assessment for properties surrounding the North and South Lakes. Trees will be logged by the condition of each tree on a scale from one to ten by size. Like the decay, the species, one of our arborists will complete the process in a timely manner. Basically, we do have two estimates right now. Um, we're gonna continue to look for, um, look at ideas and make sure that both of these people. Mike said it might be smart to do ten feet from the bank. Um, that was my question for Jesse that he just left.
You gotta, you gotta sell.
We're trying to see if I'm gonna have to get permission from each one of those residents for us to be able to go into their property and if we how far does our easement go? We would notify everybody, but do I actually have to get permission from each and everyone before I do this is what the question is, so. Because we're doing all the way around the lake.
But no part of the lake around the lake is their property.
Ten feet in is their property, is potentially part of there. So if we need to go in there to get permission, some, some might be not in our easement. That's what I don't, exactly. So it might be fifteen feet and we might be totally fine, but some of them especially over here.
I, yeah, maybe I'm not thinking about it right, but I'm like, why would we go on their land at all?
Yeah, we have to. It's some of them, like I said, are within a couple of feet of, of the bank all the way around. And again, that's probably in our easement, which is fine, but Mike had said maybe ten feet might be smart just to have it done. Doesn't mean we're gonna cut it down especially, but you know, maybe we'll push it back to six. And these don't really say whether or not they're going, they're just saying around, surrounding the lake, so I don't neither one of these really says three feet, five feet, seven feet, ten feet. So I'm trying to, we're trying to clear that up with both of them. They're both around the same price, so I know that this is probably pretty accurate. I'm expecting it to be somewhere between around five, somewhere between five and seven thousand. For the survey, just for the, just for the survey.
The, the tree survey.
Just the tree survey.
For North and South?
Yep.
Wait, what?
Yeah, just survey. It's just the survey. All they're gonna do is look at that tree and say, it's this kind of tree, go to the next one, this is kind of tree, this kind of tree, this one needs another.
That's all they ever meant by tree survey.
That's sugar maple, it's about fifty years old, it's healthy, that's, you know, a black owl hurts and makes it falling down. That's, you know, that's.
They can go more in depth. They can definitely go more in depth. They can definitely do all of these. They, some of them want us to do the whole, everything, like.
Oh, boy.
Like a forest survey.
Yeah, this one, we're only going five feet around the lake.
Right, right, right. I agree. So I just have two questions that don't even have to be answered, but I've read those real quickly.
Yes.
And the first one is, like, when was the last time a service was in the village, okay?
Like this?
Uh, I mean. And, um, and are they sending an arborist? Because.
This one says yes. Arborist will complete the process.
Yeah, but the other one?
Don't know.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, so it's a price difference, you know, so, so those are, those are my two things that, you know, if we could take it into account. I know, I know money, you know, it, it's nice to go with the cheapest, but sometimes there are meaningful differences.
Well, and that's just it.
A hundred fifty bucks.
How far is this one going? Yeah, so, and I do think that we have a third one, just so you know, we just haven't received it yet. But I'm expecting, that's why I said, I think it's gonna be somewhere between five and seventy-five hundred, something like that, because both of these are so close. Um, so yes, there's, we're not signing any contracts or anything with these yet. I just wanna tell you that this is one of the things we're working on. The other thing that I will say, um, okay, that I just totally went, you asked about the lake, so we won't do this yet. So that's my answer about the lake. End of July is when I'm expecting permitting information, per Mike. Um, Jesse just left, the village planner's gone. Um, our zoning officer's been out of town. He will be back next week. So don't expect a report from him right now. Do you have anything for planning and zoning? We have a meeting in two weeks.
There's a meeting, yeah.
What, when is the meeting?
Let me check my calendar.
I don't remember. I feel like it's March seventeenth-ish. But I could be wrong.
Um, planning and zoning, yes, it is March nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay.
I'm pretty serious, we'll be Wednesday.
Which, this Wednesday? Oh, yeah, because it's right before our meeting. Okay, so we should have some information and like I said, I'm planning on doing the P and Z on the thirteenth, so we have a full committee on the nineteenth. Alright, we went through a whole bunch of finance. I'm assuming, I shouldn't assume this, but we probably don't have much for finance right now.
I mean, we never really do.
Okay.
It's basically what Jeff says anyway, I mean, or our interpretation of it if.
Yeah, I mean, legislation went over a big chunk of too.
Streets, we have, um, I mean, we're waiting.
Where are we at? Waiting on what?
I've, I've, I have no idea where we are with it. At this point, I've not heard.
Sounds like we got the grants.
And I've heard nothing since then.
So we have the money to pay for this now, right?
I don't think we're gonna.
I'm just, I'm asking.
I, I believe so. I, I'm gonna still say I believe so, but I don't know that it's been signed, sealed, delivered, and we've seen everything yet. We basically got an email that says you guys are good, but that came from Ben.
Is the engineering work done for?
No, it's not complete yet.
Okay.
My understanding is it is still not complete yet.
Is it started?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Um, and again.
We're looking at, and, uh, Mike Flickinger's firm finishing up the engineering. We put it out to RFP. We, how long is that, thirty days?
Twenty-two, I think is a minimum, but I think we usually do around thirty.
And then we can award it, but we can't start spending any of the money until July.
Correct.
Okay, but we can do everything else to get ready for it.
And let's see if we can get those firm answers before the council meeting. That way, when we're in here, we can actually act like we know exactly what we're talking about.
I wanna, I I'll, I wanna throw this out.
You're fine.
With streets, especially a main street in a development. Because I'm always thinking about how can we beautify the village and how can we make the village stand out in town? And so I wonder about putting street lights in on Minerva Lake Road. Not a, not a big huge light, but something that says this is our main street in the village, maybe something that we could potentially put banners on at some, you know, if we're having a celebration or something. I don't know, something just to kinda line Minerva Lake Road really. Cause I come in from Blendon and I'm like, oh, look, we're in Blendon Township. I can see the, the lights, you know, and.
That's a gent's partnership too. That's like, that's a whole different animal.
So.
I remember that before it was, it was trotted down.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that we have to have them every ten feet or something, but.
And I know, and I know we were talking about doing the one right there at the corner. So could we add another one over?
Yeah, could we put one at the end of Minerva Lake Road? Could we put one in the middle? I mean, three lights. Or at least, at least run the electrical and get the infrastructure in if we can't.
Why not? Exactly.
You know, if we're taking up the yards, let's run the, let's run the electrical. I don't know, that's my opinion.
Right.
So I, I would hope we could get some of that in there.
I don't see.
But I know that it's all gonna come down to price.
Yeah.
And is that something that the people that live there want?
Yeah, I don't know. But I think, I think there's a difference between those lights that like really are bright and those that just pass the light, you know?
Well, there's also like a big thing about, and this is, I'm gonna nerd out for like thirty seconds, but there's a dark sky type of a light that doesn't light pollution.
Yeah, those are important. They have a, they have a flat top that doesn't shoot light up.
Yeah, and I, that's, that's what worries me is cause you go cheap and it's like, ah, wah, it's just a neon glare feeling.
I completely agree.
Thin.
But it could look really pretty to have Minerva Lake Road just have those, have street lights all the way down it, you know? And I, and it's a project, it's a big.
Well, I think when you start talking about, and maybe this is crazy too, but when you start talking about putting, you know, a sidewalk on one side of it and all that kinda stuff too, again, it is nice to kinda light it up a little.
That's true, lighting up a sidewalk.
Because then I start to think, okay, now we have a billion streetlights, now we have to maintain them. And then we need a bucket truck if it's really high or, you know, I, I think about the future and the costs. Oh, somebody ran into one and ran away.
Like the super tall ones.
Yeah, oh, for sure. I'm just thinking about the general, oh, wire four of them out. I, I'm, I'm still frustrated about the entryway.
I am too. I wish those stupid lights would work.
And it's like, we can't even handle the ones that are in plain day. And I'm not, I'm, I don't mean to be shutting it down or anything, I'm just like.
Oh, no, I agree.
Yeah, but when.
But that's all part of the beautification of our village, right?
For sure.
And we gotta get these entrances.
I love the idea.
And I think good, I mean, at that point, I think we just need to get an electrician down there to, to look at those because it's not something we can fix. Cause yeah, it sounds as if, and fighting the people that cut it or did this or that is just a big ol' circle. We know that. I mean, yeah, so I mean, at some point, we either have to fix it and just move on with life or.
Allegedly someone who is doing some work in the area for one of the streets or expansions, cut the wires and, and the irrigation lines apparently.
Cut those near Fairview.
Farview, yeah.
Yeah, Farview.
Cause it's a beautiful, it's, it is.
It is, yeah.
It is.
Usually there's some things that are like, kinda common.
I mean, when we moved in, there were roses planted out there and everything. They've all died off over the years. But the water, the irrigation system was never hooked in to actual water.
Oh, really?
Yeah, but it's in there.
It's, the lines are there, it's just they cut them.
Yeah, I, I was over there. Did I send you pictures to you? Okay, cause I, I was just walking one day and I was like, eh, eh, eh. And there's still some construction thing. I, I'm gonna follow up with Eric. I don't know if that's the right thing to do or not, but um, I'm kind of holding the feet to the, hey, what's wrong with this? I sent a lot, I sent, I didn't send it to Eric. I sent one, sorry for jumping in.
No.
Um, I sent it to Mr. Hillker, uh, Principal Hillker at the elementary school. Um, because there were some, uh, construction grates covered still, just like there. And there was also, they had, some of them were, uh, covered with soil and dirt and everything. And I just think about drainage from that area. What's the, how does that impact people driving through? How does it? And maybe it's not our problem, but it's, and so I sent it to him and two days fixed. But he was like, I went out there with my maintenance guy, we gotta take care of it.
Yeah.
I was like, okay.
Yeah.
So I, it's possible.
It is, no, it absolutely is. I mean, it's just knowing who is the right person to call for getting it done. And getting it done.
Okay, sorry.
No, you're good. Um, so that was streets and then services is JP. He's not here. I know we got pool memberships going. I'm gonna, I'm gonna chime in on this and then I'm gonna give it to you. Um, we have been advertising for, to help us with the pool concession manager person. Um, I'm just gonna go, that's not going great. I'm not gonna go into detail other than the fact that I haven't found anybody that can actually do the hours. Again, a very difficult thing to find someone because if you find a college kid, they have to be back to school by August for the most part. Um, so that defeats my purpose there or they're not getting back until, you know. So far, not great, um, which is why we probably have used lifeguards in the past, so we're, we're slowly, I've, I've sent a couple more emails for a couple more interviews. At this point, none of them have responded. I had eighteen applicants for it. With zero luck so far. Um, we do have an applicant for a new concession worker. Um, and one of them does wanna come back and also wants to be a lifeguard, so I'm gonna reach out to John about that. I'm assuming everybody is okay with us paying for the, and I'm assuming it's in the budget already, but, um, the lifeguard renewals and the lifeguard, you know, all the stuff that we did last year. Nothing's different. It's what we did last year. So that's, that's the only thing I have. So I, I'm not getting anywhere with that yet.
Like, um, mother that, you know, has kids that wanna.
So one person did reach out and I'm hoping that I can actually connect with this particular person because I do think it's only gonna be about twenty-ish hours a week for this particular person. And I think they thought maybe it was gonna be more, so I do have someone that might be able to do the days and the hours. I've not connected with this person yet. This is a person that does live in the village, so I'm hopeful that maybe we can figure something out that the days and the times might actually work. Cause again, running the concession, I've got one and a half people, which is really all I need. The thought is to have the concession open from about one to six. Um, and then maybe on Saturdays and Sundays a little longer, one to eight, and then maybe hol, or I'm sorry, one to seven. And then on the holidays, maybe one to seven. Um, but other than that, I think we're just gonna cut them down to one to six because we do see that it gets pretty slow. And, you know, you're already at that, that, and if you guys think it needs to stay up until seven, that's fine. I don't care. But opening at noon is pointless. Definitely not until one.
Uh, honestly, twelve forty-five might be even better.
Okay, and that's fine. That's the time in which it starts, yeah.
Yeah, that's when, on break period is when it gets busy.
Especially on the weekends.
If you wait till one.
Yeah, you're missing that first.
You miss that first break.
But during the week, I don't think that's a big deal, but like you said, on holidays and weekends, maybe we open it earlier. But during the week, I don't think that's a big deal, but like you said, on holidays and weekends, maybe we open it earlier and stay open later. But on the Monday through Friday, I just don't feel like we were that busy.
Right.
On that first one.
Right, but I, I agree.
Yeah, so, but holidays and weekends, yes, I would agree.
And that's for the assistant pool manager?
And concession just in general.
The concession hours.
The concession hours. So we were trying to keep the concession open when the pool was open, but it starts to die down, it's not as busy in the mornings.
We have two or three year, how many years have we had the concessions doing that?
This is our third.
This will be our third summer?
Yes.
Okay, we have two years with the data.
Yes.
In Square that shows us our trends and where sales are, so we can see it all.
Yeah, and I, I completely agree.
Yeah.
So that's all I have, now you can talk about pool.
Well, I learned something new tonight, we were gonna try to.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so we met with some architects and we got some proposals. And evidently, we put the cart before the horse, and we have to have a committee and all that type of stuff, so.
But we know what people can do for us, though.
The committee's been formed as of, um, six forty-five tonight, it's Jeff, um, Jesse and myself. So we have to go through this whole formal process, put out an RFP, do the whole thing, so. Jeff is, um, we were, uh, I was hopeful that maybe we could start in the fall construction, but it sounds like we'll have to wait till twenty twenty-six till the fall. Till after that pool season, which is fine, um, uh, you know, I think, I don't wanna rush anything, but again, you know, I think we know, we don't know how much time we have left with this pool, every season.
That is true.
You know, you, you hold your breath and cross everything you can, pray to God the water stays in the pool, so, um.
There is nothing more true than that statement, go ahead.
Um, I think there's, uh, there was, there is an issue on the website.
Okay.
Where last year, we had the site programmed so that people could make payments.
Is it not working?
And it is not working.
Okay, do we know that, did we know that more than today?
We, I, Barb and I talked about it.
Okay.
I told her I'd go in there and fix it, but I've not gone in there and fixed it.
Okay.
I did a lot of the maintenance on the site last year.
Yeah.
And I can do, I can do it, but, um, I'm trying not to.
Exactly.
Too involved with it.
Is it something that the people can help us do, or is it not?
They, they absolutely can.
It's just whether or not.
They tend to, um, push back on that.
Yes, they do, they, I mean, even giving us the promo code was a struggle.
Yep, also, the promo code is double discounting on residents.
Oh, I'm signing up tonight.
I know, so, I think the resident prices were put in with the twenty-five dollar discount, which they should have been.
Right.
We didn't use the, we didn't use the code on residents, we just dropped all the prices twenty-five dollars, and then at the end, and then the end of April, we just raised them back up twenty-five bucks. But they applied the early bird code to every membership that's out there. And, and marked them down twenty-five dollars for residents. And so I've, I've seen an email from a resident saying, hey, I paid twenty-five dollars less than I was supposed to, so at least they were honest about it, but, um.
But there's nothing we can do about it at this point, other than fix it.
We can take the early bird code off of it, you can tell it what to apply the early bird code to. But again, it's someone going in there and doing it, and, you know, I, I don't know. I, I don't wanna get my hands slapped this year, so I'm trying not to get too involved, um. I, have you heard anything Highland people wise, like, I haven't really even been checking who's signing up to not, cause we've offered that discount.
We did, and I actually.
When's it, when's it, when's it over?
Uh, end of April.
I was gonna say, yeah.
We, we made it a little longer this year, um, rumor has it, the, the landlord of that Highland property is doing, renting it out to another pool or another.
Oh, that's messed up.
Yeah, and they are very hot under the collar, the people that have run it for years and years are very hot under the collar about that.
Be ashamed.
I would be too, that's awful.
I did learn a couple of the things, this kind of relates to our future pool, um, so they, they have a lot of, um, swim teams that use that pool, theirs is Olympic length.
Yes, I, I actually know people.
Too many Olympic length pools around here, OSU actually uses that pool, they rent it when they have their pool redone. Cause they get theirs repainted and all that maintenance and stuff, they drain it, and so they actually use that pool. One of the swim leagues that uses it actually paid to have the pool heated, their pool heated, to put all that equipment in, and I know that that was a, that is in our proposal for our pool. Um, but we had also talked, said, hey, you know, maybe we just get it wired in, but we don't actually install it. I just want us, as we are talking through the pool design, maybe we keep that in mind, because they're, they typically come early in the morning for swim practice, and that water can get pretty cold, and if we can entice people by saying, hey, our pool's heated.
Right, I will never forget.
Saying we, we're making it an eighty-degree pool in any way, but.
I remember swim lessons when I was like eight years old, and it was like, or six years old, however old I was, but I do remember how cold that pool was, and I went to JC.
Yeah.
And it was the worst, you like stood there and shivered and you couldn't really do swim lessons, so.
Cold plunges are a thing now, it's like.
And now you pay money for it, right?
Absolutely.
Add ice.
Absolutely, minor cold check, yeah, so I just wanna throw that, kinda keep that in your back of your mind as we talk about things that we wanna take out of that budget or the plans for the pool, maybe that's not one we take out. Um.
Signing up right now.
Uh, other than that. Good job, I haven't signed up yet either.
I haven't.
It's paid, like forty seconds, one minute.
Yeah, I don't know.
I hope it can be made up.
Um, well, we're working on hiring some people, and I'll talk to John, John's been sending pictures of the pool and getting us all excited about it, and so I will tell you that I'm, I'm, I'm for it, I'm ready.
Did you find a good blue duct tape for the crack, or no?
I hope so, I mean, if not, I'm gonna go to Myers, cause I promise you, they have hot pink, they have, they have everything.
So I did find out the leftover paint that we've already painted in our basement.
Our basement here?
Our basement here.
Awesome.
So, if we wanna do anything.
I mean.
But.
So, we are working on potentially another seasonal, uh, we, the person that we had last year, we're hoping as far as maintenance, cause we will bring that person back. Um, they are undecided, meaning if they find a job, they're graduating college, so if they find a job before then, then maybe they won't, but maybe they'll come for, you know, they know how to do everything, so they might come and work a little bit more, so, um, we'll see how that goes, if not, we will probably be looking for another seasonal person to help out, do different things.
Yeah.
Um, our goal and our plan is to meet with John over the next couple of weeks or months, and I probably will still invite you. Um, just to kinda go over, uh, a lot of the things that maybe we're gonna have our maintenance team do instead of the lifeguards do this year, and the reason for it is, is just to try to keep the budget more internal and, um, making sure that we're keeping track a little bit better of some of the budget items.
Some safety and OSHA type things, but.
Yeah.
We've done that, probably shouldn't do.
Yeah, so there's, there's some things that, um, you know, we met with our insurance agent here, um, we do it every single year, they do, I, I don't wanna call it an audit or whatever, but, you know, they do stress certain things to do and certain things not to do, and they remind us each year of things that we aren't doing, and, you know, all of that, so there's gonna be some different things that we just need to make sure we dot our i's and cross our t's with, um, so, that'll be something, you know, that we'll just discuss with John to make sure that we're all on the up and up, and it's not that we're doing anything wrong, it's just, maybe we should do things better. Um, okay, so.
Safety, yeah, sorry.
Do you have something else?
No, 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 I thought next was legislation, I forgot.
Oh, no, let's do safety, and you have to talk for at least two minutes.
Okay. Um, well, you know, I mean, sick raccoons, yeah.
And I, I don't know if you had asked, and I'm not asking to bring this up or anything like that, but I know you had asked last time in the, during the meeting, if there was anything that you guys did wanna talk about as far as, so, you know, now that we've had three, is, is there any, uh, thing that you guys wanna talk about from any of that, maybe you don't, and I'm not implying that to spend the next hour doing it, but if there is anything.
Talking about from the, um, exit survey.
Or even, you know, the upcoming people, if there's anything that we think that we should be doing, um, things that we shouldn't be doing or anything like that, I hate doing those, Win Chief's not here, but I also think that you know, in a work session is probably more where something like that belongs versus in an actual, um, council meeting, a formal public presentation. Yeah, I mean, no, it can be talked about in there, but I think the first initial conversation needs to come from something like this, is it something that you want to address, but I know you've now, I didn't know that, but now you've done three, um, you've done some interviews, you know, do you like the way that we conduct them, is there something that you would like to see done differently, this is something brand new, is there something you wanna see? But if you don't have anything, maybe you guys do, or maybe we just move on and we talk about that next month.
I'm.
The, the interviews?
Yeah.
Feelings, thoughts, input, you did an interview.
I did exit interviews. I know why they're leaving.
I wish, yeah, I wish I could have been to exit.
Well, what they said was the shifts, right, the, the twelve, they wanted to do the twelve.
Today's because it was, uh, we did hold, um, written down answers, and then we opened the floor afterwards to, hey, off the record.
Ah.
Um, so I, I.
Like Airbnb, here's what we posed, here's, tell us.
In a sense, but also like.
Because this is public record, without identifying any trends.
Yeah.
Yes, and some of them, some of them stated the same thing publicly while the others requested it to be held private, but, yes, so.
Do we need anything like an anonymous survey, is really my question, because it seems like we've lost a lot of officers lately.
Are you talking about an internal?
Anonymous could really be though.
Are you talking about an internal survey, or?
I'm, I'm talking about actually the officers who have left in the last year, and it's just something I'm kinda throwing out.
Yeah.
Because if there is a problem, getting anonymous input from people
Yeah.
is, is ac- is accurate, and yes, surveys can still be anonymous, I mean, we, we still.
I think, I think what happens is.
I, I, I'd be concerned how, how anonymous they truly be, just cause of the, the sample size.
Right, that's where I was about to go.
I'm not saying we do anything.
Someone leaves and takes a survey, oh, look, we have new answers in here, obviously another problem, and that gets really the anonymity of it.
And not if we don't.
I don't even think you need to at this point, based upon the things that I, that I've been, you know, telegraphed, uh, it's, it, a lot of it uh, is a morale challenge. Uh, I'm, I don't know police officers, like personally, I just know what I've talked to them, and it seems like police want to police. You know, like, they just want to get people that are breaking the law, stop and pull them over, stop, catch them. Uh, it's, it can, you can have a lot of traffic stuff in the village during the day, but their shit, eh, it's a little sleepy.
Yeah.
And, uh, the morale challenges, I think, are coming from instances of people getting overly criticized as to their every move.
Ah.
Um, and a little bit of a micromanagement situation where they get so questioned that it makes them not want to work, where they're, they're almost, uh, I was just looking up in this nerd alert, operate conditioning theory, like BF Skinner, like, there's like, you know, positive reinforcement, negative reinforcement, and you try and encourage behavior or discourage the behavior, and it, it, it's like, it's more so encouraged to sit in the parking lot and not move because you still get paid, you still get the job done. And if you pull somebody over, you won't get complained to about something.
The one thing I would say about that is, I mean, it, how do I say this, it is no longer twenty twenty. That being said, to completely give up and surrender any kind of, you know, civil oversight of law enforcement, uh, would be a bit too much of a reaction, and I'm not saying this isn't weird doing here, I'm just saying that in the, in the context of the country, which we are, you know, a part of, it would be unwise to, you know, just, oh, you know, go do, you know, police be police, do anything.
Swinging completely.
Yes, so I mean, like you said, it's not twenty twenty anymore, but I mean, there, there, I mean, people were upset for valid reasons.
Yeah.
And to completely revert back to, you know, any, you know, getting rid of any kind of reforms, that's.
I think that's definitely a national tone, but I think our issue is.
I don't think the issue is in Minerva Park.
Is, yes, and I, because one, one officer said, I've been here for this amount of time, and nobody's ever told me thank you. Nobody's ever told me, you're doing a good job.
Like, nobody nobody?
Nobody nobody, I don't recall a time when that's happened.
So how does this feedback get back to the police department?
Here we are, that's, that's, I mean, this is safety committee, this is, I, I am, I would probably say.
Were you surprised with, were you surprised with the answer, I, I actually excused myself, I did not wanna be in there, because in fairness, I know a lot of the officers, um, you know, there's, there are, you know, there are challenges with, you know, being married to an officer that works here, um, and I don't mean challenges, I didn't used to have challenges, now I feel like even I have challenges trying to balance between. Um, I do feel like that sometimes maybe officers come to me not meaning to, um, but sometimes I do know too much, and I'm literally saying this on a public record. Um, so I excuse myself from, I, I do like doing the interviews, but I, I will not be in the room when they're doing exit interviews, because number one, I do, where you say you don't know them, I know most of these guys on a personal level, um, friends with them, you know, one of them was in our wedding. So, you know, having, having that, I tried to excuse myself, so, I do hear some of the things that he is referring to, but I'm trying to take a step back away from it to an extent. Um, you know, I've expressed concerns as well, and, that I've heard, but I do try to, to keep that balance of like some of the thing, like what you're saying, so it's, it's very difficult to, so that's why I wanted to make sure that we really are doing exit interviews, because I have felt as if there is maybe some concerns, and I'm not saying that one person is right, or the other person is right, or this is not, you know, I, I don't think anybody specifically is to blame, but I feel like I needed to take a step back and let somebody else do these exit interviews to listen to some of the concerns that I, and I don't know what these people are gonna say, I mean, to be honest. Some people do exit interviews and they're just done, they just don't wanna really say anything, and I don't know if you got that from some, or, you know, I know you've done a couple of them, and you don't have to answer that, but, I don't, I didn't, I felt like if I were in a room in an exit interview, that maybe either they would shy away from saying something, or they would feel like they needed to say something because they'd said it to me in private, so I wanted to excuse myself from all of those, and I, so I did not do them, and I will not be at any exit interviews, cause we will keep it the same.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think that was one of the things that, we've never done this before, but even I had started to feel as if, and, and, and it's not new, I mean, it's, it's absolutely not new, um, the concerns that, you know, again, that some people had, had that he is mentioning, so, and I would agree with that.
But all that matters now.
Yes.
Is what process do we put in place so that this feedback can be appropriately fed back to the police department? And, and that's why something like a survey to something like four to six people, at least is anonymous enough, and we're just going to collate the information, and it can be, hey, you know, believe it or not, four out of the last six officers who left all said this, you know, so I don't care how we do it, I don't care how we do it.
Would you?
But this has to get back to the police department in a professional way.
I, I don't think that this will be news to him, I think that he knows.
I don't, I don't think that's the point.
Yeah.
What, what we need is a process where we're able to say, we are council, we have sought this feedback, we have fed it to the police department, and in six months, we're going to ask you what you've done, and so, you know, so I don't care if he knows. If he knows and he's not doing anything, that's a problem, I imagine he's doing something, but, you know, I mean.
I think my concern is bringing new people in, I want to make sure, you know, I, I, I always say this, I have two jobs to do. Make sure the village is safe and make, make sure we're physically sound, and when we don't have those two things in place, then I start to worry, and I'm not saying that we don't, but those are the two things that I feel like are very important to me, and when, when I'm concerned about, you know, wasteful money, or things like that, and I start seeing that kinda stuff, then I feel like this is something that you guys should be aware of. Um, and rightfully so, there's a point to this, anytime you hire a new officer, they are outfitted, they are, you know, we do, we do background checks, we do CVSA's, we do physicals, we pay for that stuff, there's a lot of money involved.
Yeah.
And if we bring in new people. And if we bring in new people and we end up in the same position.
Then that's a waste of money.
Then, you know, if we don't address maybe some of the concerns. I know that there were other things that were discussed, and I know that some people like it ten, you know, working for tens or working three, we have a very small department, there are certain things that we just can't fix. Um, that other people are gonna leave because of certain things.
Right.
Um, you know, so, that, my concern moving forward is like he, you know, like he is saying, he's been in three of the interviews, and, and maybe some of the things it sounds like were repeated. How do we stop that from these two new people or three new people that are coming in?
Exactly.
That's where my concern is. So I think I'm, I'm gonna piggyback on what you said, I'm not opposed to a survey at all. Um, again, we have three people that have left, I don't know, we actually have four probably, we have four that have been within the last year. Um, but that is it, we have four officers that have left in the last year, and before that, it's the same thing, we probably had one. So this is all, boom, boom, exactly. Um, so I think either we could do something like that, or.
And the responses would go to Dr. Borup and Pio. And, and then, it creates its own analysis, but then you apply your own personal experience analysis on it. And so, it's not like a council member is going to get these responses.
Right.
Definitely not.
Right, no, it shouldn't be a third one.
Now, yeah, yeah.
In the future, and again, just spitballing this, we had one particular council person in there, would people prefer there to be different council? I thought keeping the same person because
Yeah.
He kinda knows like, okay, is this a pattern, is this, is there that? Or should we be inviting two council people, so, you know, you kinda just don't have one person's perspective, like, again, there's, I don't wanna say two sides to every story, but, you know, just because someone is upset and they're feeding off of each other, because again, you can look at, you can go that direction too. They're feeding off of each other, so now you have this, but you could have two perspectives versus one, um, if we brought two people in. Because again, I think, I think the concern is, again, just moving forward, having some new people in here, making sure we don't, and actually, we're gonna have three new people in here. So just making sure that moving forward, we don't, people's lives change, people do move on, people do those types of things, you can't always keep everybody, but we had a really good track record for a long time, and.
I mean, I still think it's a good idea to do some type of employee survey, you know.
Yep.
To have a cadence on it.
Could we, and this is again, just a question, could we potentially do the four people that have left? We haven't had anybody leave upstairs. So, I mean, I'll just, I'll toot my own horn for that. Um, anyways, we have the people upstairs, but maybe we do the four people that have left, but then do a general survey of the current people that are here. Because.
Well, that's always an idea.
Yeah.
It should be done annually.
But we don't, we don't do it, and I think, I think the problem, if it were, I know, if it were anonymous, I think you would get some answers, but I think if it was not, you would have some issues getting some responses.
Well, and again, you know, Bor is fine receiving all that stuff, and then all I would ever see is the analysis, that's all we'd ever see, she'd probably kinda wanna talk through it and that sort of thing. So like there would be no one who even lives in Minerva Park who would see individual responses, and I think that's very important.
I think it's, once someone leaves, I think it's gonna be difficult to get those answers, to get them to do it.
I, I agree, this, you know, this.
We can try, yeah.
You know, Ohio Health does something interesting, they, they send you years like a month or so after, so you know, God forbid there's some kind of issue, you've had a month to cool off.
Yeah, I actually approved that too, but I also.
Do they get a good response to it, bro?
I would not. I don't know, I've only got one to fill it out once, when I was leaving. And I, I don't, and I, and I'm not disagreeing with it, we could get them to respond, I think it'd be great, but I could tell you I threw it in the trash, because I'd moved on with my life.
Right.
And I feel like, in this particular situation, I, I would tell you that I think it would go in.
Is there one of those things you'd need to get to them before they leave, and then you can kinda, hey, did you do your exit interview?
Or, I wonder, okay, I'm not there anymore, my job's not a risk, I'm not gonna get a term with my boss.
That's true. Very true.
I've had very much trouble like that, man.
I, I can, I can be a little more honest, and hey, this isn't even going to anyone who lives in the village, so I can, I don't know.
I, I, I will tell you, um, I have zero issues doing it, I think if we got a response, great, I think you probably got some pretty good feedback. At this point, I would love to see us put something together for yearly that we do for the current people here, because here's where I sit right now. We have lost three amazing officers, and for whatever reason ended up being the pushover, we've lost three amazing ones. If we continue to lose at this pace, um, but I mean, it doesn't just put wear and tear on the budget, it puts wear and tear on these officers, and I, I live with one, so.
Absolutely.
You know, he's working every single night.
They're controlling people, losing them is pretty brutal.
You have second shift working by themselves, or third shift working by themselves, or first shift working by themselves. There is probably nothing, and I, I'm, I'm speaking way out of line here, and I probably shouldn't say this, because again, I know too much, but when you work third shift by yourself, you have no interaction with anybody, honestly, he's not talking to me. So he is literally, if you drive through here at three o'clock in the morning, you don't even see a car. So again, it's the mental part, and that goes back to the shift if thing.
Yeah.
It is a mental, if you haven't done it, you probably don't.
I've done nine, I've done nine sweeps in the half year straight, it is.
Yes, but you see people living out of the hospital, you're sitting in the third by yourself.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying it's the worst, yes.
So in second shift's not any different, if you're working by yourself and there's not anything going on, you, you hit that seven, eight, nine o'clock at night, you're, you're, you're trying to. So I, I just, I fear losing anybody else, um, I fear losing the new people, I fear that type of stuff, and that does not make us physically responsible.
Yeah.
Um, and I, I, you know, I, I think I'm just gonna keep my mouth shut when it comes to anything else, but that, that's my fear, is we continue on a downward.
Uh, I think it's wise to do an employee survey.
I do too.
Uh, it helps head off things, you know, sometimes you.
People talk who actually were willing to talk.
Yeah.
Because I bet a lot of these people would probably talk.
If they knew it was, if they knew that, like you said, I, I think that.
Hey, this is not even going to one of us, it's not going to come from one of us, it's going to come from.
I, I literally took, our company's doing it right, right now. I took it the other day, thirty-one questions.
Yep.
All strongly agree to strongly disagree.
Yep.
Took me five minutes.
Exactly.
But, it's, it, the questions are broad enough to, to get an idea, you know?
Yeah.
Do you, do you feel like the company has a vision? Do you feel like the leadership is conveying stuff? Are you looking to leave in the next couple of years?
Yeah.
All of these things, you know, do you feel safe at, at work?
I think those are great questions.
You know, all those type of things that you ask, that kinda get a gauge.
Right.
And, and it, and then you get all the stuff back, and you're like, oh, look, sixty percent of our team says this, like, this is something we need to address.
Right.
And it can help drive accountability, and I think that's what.
Yeah.
Don't necessarily have a process in place, but it's like, hey, these are the challenges that these people that left have. Chief, what do you think? Because in my brain, I got the sense that people love chief, and they'll die on a hill for him. But as a, as a council person, my thought is, this is chief's problem. Why isn't he solving his problem?
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I've, I've had a conversation with him before, and I know that he is aware of it.
Right.
And I, that's kind of my, my point, it's like, it starts at the top and asks to work his.
Well, and then it comes to me, and that's where I feel like this is why I brought you, okay, I'm gonna handpick you, and I handpicked you for a reason to do the exit interviews. And that's why I wanted you in the regular interviews. We never used to have council people up until, I mean, we started with you.
Yeah, I get it, gotta get it.
Um, is getting people more involved in, getting council more involved in the everyday activities and those types of things. Because, again, I think it's important for council, you guys are passing legislation, you guys are passing raises, you guys are passing all of these things. And just as you guys were, you know, listened to earlier today, you know, just the simple fact of happening, us happening to deal with something like that was just extremely disappointing.
What, dealing with what, I'm sorry?
The shift if type thing.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Like, just disappointing that we, it was a thing, like, and I'm not saying, rightfully so, not saying not. It never dawned on me that it would turn into anything, like, it was meant to be what it was meant to be for, and it was not.
Right.
So, um, I'm not, you know, I'm not, it is what it is.
So, so my thought on this is, I know we're, we're looking to hire some new people right now. I don't think we'll get great information if we do something real quick, right?
I don't either.
So, I would say, I would say, we probably need to figure out what we wanna ask and plan on doing it in the fall.
I have no issue with that.
You know?
I'm sorry, is this employee satisfaction?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Do, do, do you know, like, would that person have like a standard that we could start with?
Oh, I'm sure.
And I mean, and maybe we don't do that, maybe we don't go crazy until the fall, maybe we do early summer, or.
They're very basic. I think, I think in order to get good input from the new people, you need to give them.
Okay, so you wanna wait for the new people instead of trying to get data before we hire the second and third?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's, let, I mean, let's get the three people in here, let's give them three months or.
That's a, that's a whole.
Get the ninety days in before we start, because they could have a totally different perspective than people that are.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah. And even thinking about like, yeah, I work nights for four and a half years straight, but there are always, you know, five or six other nurses with me talking on patients, I was sitting alone.
Yeah.
That'd be, for that long.
That's the feedback that I got, was, was, I, I.
They wanna be proactive.
Well, they've been, they, they haven't been to a place like this, and they have experience in policing, where they just show up, they walk to their car, they do their job, and they get out of their car at the end of the night, and they go off. And there's not as much, I don't know, interaction with others. And I don't know if that's, that's what I kind of inquired on, on one of those exit interviews about, like, what do you guys do for camaraderie, is there like a night, or, and they talked about Thursday awards thing. I'm like, you know, is there like a night out, I mean, I, I, just a socialization thing, there's a national night out in Minerva Park thing.
We, once I did, um, when the pool was not open, um, I invited all of them to the pool, and we just kinda went and hung out at the pool. But again, not everybody can come.
Yeah.
Um, but obviously, they didn't have to pay, it was during, can't remember if we did it in like May, right before November, or September, or whatever it was, but the pool wasn't, it might have been in August when we closed the pool.
Yeah.
Um, but they all brought their girlfriends or kids, I mean, there was a couple of kids there and this and that. Um, but yes, we, but we haven't done that because it's just been more difficult.
I think something else may be, why don't we do an appreciation night? Like, maybe us as council doing something for them.
Well.
You know?
And it, not even just the police department, I mean, so, I'm, I'm not gonna skip around except for, um, Barb literally did this entire application for the safe routes to school. I helped her about one percent. I mean, the woman does absolutely everything in this building, and everything that she doesn't do, Leah does. So Leah is literally wearing three hats, she works around the clock. The amount of hours that they both put in, and the amount of time, and, you know, if it, like, the website, you guys know what they do. And I think it's hard because so many people don't know what they do.
Right.
Um, but this village runs, Leah, I cannot even explain to you everything, I mean, just from finance to the police department, to the tickets, to the, you know, and, you know, hiring everybody, like this pool season, I mean, it, Barb and then Leah gets all of the rest of it, um, as far as going through the content, you guys get it. So it's, I, I do, I mean, there are times in which I will text them and just tell them, you know, thank you for everything you do, and I will do that. Um, but it's never, it's never, you could do that every single day, and it is never gonna be enough for everything that they do. And I will, I've said that in meetings, I love saying that, you know, periodically in the meetings, because without those two, I, not that Brian is not important in maintenance, because I will also say this, I could call Brian at nine o'clock at night, and he will drop everything he's doing and go do something for me. So it is, it's everything, I, I actually called Eric the other night when we had that, um, this, the team in here, I don't think people really do give enough credit for, but I called Eric at nine thirty, ten o'clock the other night, when we had that water main break, trying to find like flickers, we were looking for the actual shut off, and I tell you, that man answered the phone and one ring. So, they don't have to, I mean, he's part-time, but he answered his phone, he got me the information, sent it over to me in minutes. So it's all the way down the line, I mean.
Can we, uh, even, even if we had the budget, a little money for this, can we get someone to kinda come up with our questions for us, and maybe even that platform of, because.
Yeah.
Google.
Google.
Yes. I, I mean, this is what she does.
You just know what we need to do.
Yeah.
And as far as an appreciation thing, I mean, they loved when we went to the pool that day, it didn't cost us anything other than maybe some pizzas or whatever, and, and we, I just paid for it, like.
I think we as council could probably do something, like, it's probably right for us to do that.
And it, it's kind of a question of, do we wanna open it to the whole village, or do we just want council to?
I'm, I'm fine either way.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's just us, my house.
Yeah.
You know, but if it's everybody living here, so.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, the hard part is, is no matter what, you're always gonna have officers on duty, it's gonna be their day's off, or it's gonna be this or that.
Right.
So, no, I mean, it's gonna happen, so what you do, what we do is we tend to try to pick a day that is the least amount of people off, and the least amount of this or that. The officers that are on duty, they have their stuff on and they come, like, it's just, they're, you know, if they get a call, they run out the door, and that's, that's normal.
Right.
Um, again, our officers eat lunch on duty, they, they do every, like, I've seen them, heard them. They'll go in, order their food, they get a call, they run out the door, so they've left, they've paid for food before and had to leave.
Hmm.
Um, it happens very rarely, but, you know, those are, those are the things that do happen, so yes, the ones that are on duty would still be here, same thing with national night out. Um, we are working on a date for that, I, it's gonna be September again, hopefully in the next day or two. I think she messaged Corley to find out what night football games are, because we wanna avoid that because of traffic and, and all of that, so. If, we were trying to figure out if they're Thursdays or Tuesdays, Wednesday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, because we don't wanna do that in September, so if you get a answer before I do, let me know.
So within two weeks, I'll have draft of the two surveys, to you, employee satisfaction, and an exit.
Yes.
Kinda specific to the police, so I may ask you for some input about the questions that you all asked in person, but yeah, you'll have it.
Leah has those, um.
Yes.
Oh, does she?
There's a form, yeah, we, we ask the specific questions, but we also.
And she is here tomorrow.
Okay.
So, um, she, I think is out of the office Monday and Tuesday, just, but if you wanna talk to her tomorrow, she will be here tomorrow.
Yeah.
Um, we, when we, and, um, for two conferences.
Your time.
When we installed that radar speed thing, we talked about relocating it every once in a while.
Mm-hmm.
Where would you like it moved?
I, how much did we pay for that? Anyone remember? Five thousand, eight thousand?
It wasn't anything too, too crazy, it was.
I thought it was between three and five.
Yeah, it was, it was pricey, but it wasn't, and then.
Well, I don't know that I'd call that pricey, if it's three.
Yeah, it wasn't.
I wouldn't call that pricey.
Well.
I just wonder.
Or a year check.
It was called radar, what was it called?
Anyway. Do we wanna move it, do we wanna get a second one? Uh, we talked about moving it.
I'm not opposed to having at least two in the village, for crying out loud.
But I don't think it would hurt to have another one.
Let me know about how, what are those?
It, it does, it will actually monitor every single time somebody goes over twenty-five miles an hour, I can tell you if you, I can't look it up right this minute, but I can tell you tomorrow, how many times somebody was going over twenty-seven miles. So they can see if somebody was going thirty-five or forty, or actually, I think it's seven, in, in this window, and doesn't do anything except for chief can go, okay, between, and we do look at it, between three and four, there's people that are going X amount, and then they will have somebody sit there. So we can use the data from it, we do use the data from it.
I was, I was leaving earlier today, this afternoon, it was after lunch, and I was going down the hill, and I, I watched that side, right?
But if you.
But I also watched four cars behind me that also were, and I was like, okay, you know, it may not stop everyone from slowing down, but.
It does.
A lot of people were watching it.
Yep.
Should we put a second one in?
Where else? Like, where else would you all want it? Because, you know, I'm at the Wildwood of Minerva Lake, and, and you know, it's too hard to speed down there, too many people.
I think Minerva Lake Road has some issues, I think there might be some with the cut, or cut-through area between the old section and the new section, but I'm not quite sure where that specific spot is.
But I'm sure chief has some ideas, because I'm sure that there's people, I mean, I do know that they've complained in that particular area. That is an area that we do have, the, the whole bathroom on court, tons of kids in the area, so that particular area in general would not be a bad idea, just for the simple fact that that's a kid's own area.
Yeah.
Um, we had talked about putting something like that with flashing lights, crosswalk signs, speed limit, this or that, over by the school. Um, it's, you know, I, I don't know if we could get the school to split one with us or something like that.
That'd be a good idea.
Not seen anything.
I thought you mentioned that in the meeting.
Yeah, I'm sure we did, but I haven't seen anything from there.
Well, uh, if it's not too pricey, I, I think it's being effective for the most part.
And the flawed cameras have been, I mean, again, I, I think those have been great.
I think if we can find a spot to put another one in.
Let's ask chief, so chief will not be at Thursday's meeting, um, he will be out of town. But he will be at the following, so that is something that either at the next one or we could shoot him an email, where would you recommend? But in the meantime, we can go ahead and just reach out to the company and find out how much another one would cost us. So, and I can have that for the next meeting. Cause I, I have, I think it's radar sign.
Yes, radar sign, yeah.
I think it's just radar sign.
Well, and this is why I'm looking forward to the resident survey, because I'd like to know what everyone else thinks. You know, Michael and I feel so safe around here, but not that everyone may.
No, not everybody does.
Yeah, so.
And I, I think, again, everybody has a different perspective. You know, again, I brought up the whole ticket thing and all of that stuff because there is a different perspective from different people. Just because you don't see it doesn't mean it's not happening. Um, again, if you look at the numbers, we've pulled over potentially less people, but we've ticketed, we've actually, for whatever reason, the ticket numbers went up, um, and the calls to service and those types of things. So, you know, again, there's just a different perspective of what, what somebody sees versus what's really happening. And I think that's, you're never gonna fix that, but you know, again, we do get emails, chief gets emails, so he kinda knows what areas people are concerned about, valid or not, um, that's their feelings. So, um, you know, you, you, you wanna make sure that you're looking into every one of those problems, questions, concerns. So he would probably have an idea of where he's seen the most people concerned about speed.
I mean, as council members, I think we have pretty much two ways of addressing the issue. We put more cops where the speeders are or we put systems in that help deter speeding.
And, and the hard part that I, I will tell you that the hard part and I should not, I'm not gonna go into detail, but we're down three officers.
Yeah, exactly.
So, um, the amount of things that you're gonna see over the next couple of weeks will probably, again, they, the priority is always going to be those calls that come in.
Absolutely.
Um, it's not going to be the, the sitting on Minerva Lake Road and ticketing. Now, unless that's the call that's coming in, that there's, you know, there's some major concerns. But, you know, they do definitely get calls that, you know, there's something going on at this house or something, or an alarm drop or something like that. That's, third, third shift gets a lot of that and that's something that we are gonna be looking into because there's a, there's a particular place or two that that's happening all the time.
Is it residential or?
It's one of the commercials.
So then.
Yes, correct, you are correct. There's, there has to be some sort of fear or something.
Yes, there's gonna have to be some.
Yes.
My stores get them.
Also our.
Yeah, absolutely.
We found out that the wifi was setting off the motion detectors in the, in the stores. So now we turn the wifi off at night.
Quick safety thought, not really a thought, uh, there's some experience. I know into my section, there are some people that are riding little mini bikes.
No.
Up and down the road and the sidewalk. Um, yeah, I, I heard him, I was out, I, I got video. Um, and I know it's been addressed with them individually, but I also know that they were advised that they could go right at the elementary school park a lot until they complained about it, but. Um, it's just something like, I was making sure that we had some, it's just something I wanted to bring up, just, you know, people probably be doing some stuff.
Oh, they like the.
You can get them for three hundred bucks on, you, it's a, it's a forty cc weed whacker motor on a little mini bike. You can get them on Amazon, deliver tomorrow morning for four, three hundred bucks. I mean, it's, you know, what you can do today.
It's wild.
Right, I'm, I'm on it.
It's bad too.
No. You're lying.
Oh.
Uh, no, but I just thought I'd bring it up to the safety committee, just in case. I, I think that there's laws in place to, to deal with it, especially riding on.
I don't know if we have. Do we have, do we have some around that?
What's that?
Laws around that?
I think you just can't operate a motor vehicle on sidewalks, A. You can't operate an unlicensed, unregistered motor vehicle on public roadways, period.
So there are those golf carts?
Golf carts are, they have their own special thing.
Yeah.
That's a different bird, it's a different animal.
Okay, I'm just asking.
It's Ohio, baby.
Trying to be clear.
It's Wild West in some ways.
Anything else for safety? We wanna run through legislation now, quick?
Yes.
Sure.
Um, and we'll do this as fast as possible. David, do you wanna read through it at all or do you want me to? I don't.
It's an.
I mean, I don't have a physical copy of it, I'm made up. I know there's nothing too, too crazy.
The P and Z ordinance is the one that we're fixing for P and Z that has actually been requested that we fix the wording of a couple of things. Um, so that is what that one is. Um, the SRT grant assistance is, um.
That was what, um.
So this is what she just did, the, the Safe Routes to School. So she needs, um, the draft copy of the ordinance to go along with, with the application. So she's got all of that information, so we just need to get that passed so we can apply for it. Um, and get all of that, so that's what that one is. And then, um.
What's in the wages?
The wages and the salaries and getting that adjusted.
Issue.
Yes, so that's that. Um, the motion to approve for the Turk Committee, so we'll have that done. There's gonna be two additional things that's gonna be added in here shortly, I can't remember exactly, but I do want you guys aware that we're gonna be adjusting some of the handbook concerns as well. Um, there are a couple of things in the handbook. Um, the, the first one that I'm gonna make note of, and, and yes, I'm just gonna say it, is, um, obviously, we've had three officers leave right now. And in our, in our handbook, previously, we always had in there that during your last, when you give notice of two weeks, you can't take the whole two weeks off and do all of that. You can't technically use your personal days, you can't just take vacation days the whole time or a majority of the time. That is not in there and that has been happening. So we are going to fix the handbook, we're gonna ask you guys to pass it. You guys are not gonna see it yet because we've been working on all these other things. We will get that to you. There's something else to do with the holidays, um, and about how they bank their holidays, it's gonna be adjusted in there.